All right, so I see a majority of council members here. We have a quorum, so I will call tonight's meeting, regular session this Wednesday, April 21st, 2021 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Volin.
Here.
Rosenbarger.
Here.
Scambleri.
Sorry, here.
Sims.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All nine, I'm sorry, all nine members are present this evening. We will go and do the agenda summation. Before I get started with that, for a bit of clarification for our viewing audience and those at attendance, I just want to remind those that if you are interested in the deliberations of Ordinance 21-23, which has to do with the Plexus, and Ordinance 21-24, which has to do with the zoning map, those aren't on the agenda for this evening, and we will begin deliberations on those items at our next meeting on Wednesday. So without further ado, tonight's agenda summation. We will have approval of minutes, if any. Then we'll move to reports from council members, the mayor and the city offices. I believe we have a report from the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Report this evening. Then we'll move the council committees, and then we'll have comment from the public. I will remind everyone that each of these sections I just mentioned is set aside for a maximum of 20 minutes. Then we'll move down to appointments to boards and commissions. We do have legislation for second readings and resolutions this evening. Number one, we have Resolution 21-08, which is accepting the City of Bloomington Climate Action Plan. Then we'll move to Ordinance 21-15, which is to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Technical Corrections Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20 dash or 20 dot O2, 20 dot O4, 20 dot O6, and 20 dot O7. Then we'll move to Ordinance 21-16 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20 dot O2. Then we'll move to Ordinance 21-19 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20 dot O5. We'll proceed on to Ordinance 21-20 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20 dot 06. We have Ordinance 21-21 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20 dot O7. We have Ordinance 21-17 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20 dot O3. We have Ordinance 21-18 to correct, to, I'm sorry, to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20 dot O4. And finally, for second readings, we have Ordinance 21-22 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Removal of Residential Estate RE, an amendment to residential large lot R1 zoning district set forth In Bloomington Municipal Code 20 dot O2, 20 dot O3, 20 dot O4, 20 dot O5, 20 dot O6, and 20 dot O7. Then we'll move on to legislation for first readings. That is Ordinance 21-26 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Amending Chapter 15.37, the Residential Neighborhood Permit Parking To Add a Penalty for Using a Residential Neighborhood Parking Permit in an Unauthorized manner. Section 15 dot 37 dot O8, oh, proof of permit purchases required to add a penalty for not displaying a neighborhood Parking or visitor permit when parked in a residential neighborhood zone, and adding that penalty to the list of Class G traffic violations. Section 15 dot 37 dot 100, replacement of permit to require permit holders to report stolen permits to the police Before receiving a free replacement. And section 15 dot 1, I'm sorry, 15 dot 48 dot 010, general provisions to require people who have their cars towed After they have accumulated six or more unpaid parking citations to pay their unpaid citations Before their car will be released to them. After that, we will have additional public comment. I will remind those present is that this is for a maximum of 25 minutes. I will also remind members that a public may speak on matters of community concern during those public comment periods, not listed on the agenda at one of the two public comment opportunities. Citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both. Speakers are allowed five minutes. This time allotment may be reduced by the presiding officer if numerous people wish to speak. Okay, then we'll move to matters of council schedule, and then we will look into adjourn for the evening. Okay, we'll go back up, and do we have any approval or minutes for approval this evening? I don't see any. Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to reports. And I'll call on our council members as I see them on the screen, Councilmember Smith.
I have no report this evening, sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Volin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. At the end of every ordinance, after the period of public comment, we have a period where council members speak to the pending issue. For too many years, this period has been referred to as council comment. This has been understood to mean that each member gets to comment on the issue at hand a single time. This is not correct, and it never has been, because no one should think it fair for Member B To refute Member A's comment, and that be the end of discussion. Fairness dictates that Member A have a chance to rebut Member B's comment, and that Member B have a rebuttal in turn. This is exactly how debate is defined in Sections 4 and 43 of Robert's Rules. The opportunity to speak to the issue once, and to speak in rebuttal once. I quote, "In a deliberative assembly, debate applies to discussion on the merits of a pending question." That the right of debate is inherent in such an assembly is implied by the word deliberative, unquote. So you can't truly have discussion without a back and forth. Yet for many years, when I've sought to debate an issue by speaking to it a second time, I've gotten passive resistance or sometimes open flack from the chair of any given meeting because of this mistaken assumption. Roberts is so much more concerned with restricting people who want to speak more than twice to the issue, in fact, that it hardly dwells on this problem. But we need to change our practice by referring to that period as council debate, even if we continue to call an individual speech a comment. My colleague, the ranking council member at large, described her report of April 7th as a rebuttal of my speech of March 17th. I understand the innocuous rhetorical intent she meant with that word, but if we're having a healthy debate about an important issue, it is better describe her as simply having spoken in opposition to my speech, because tonight I wish to rebut her statement. I want to point out that she didn't need to request a special opportunity to respond to a fellow council member's report, and I welcome her rebuttal if she chooses to give one at our next regular session on May 5th, and I will not use a future report to comment a third time on that speech. But as to the substance of her opposition, my colleague seems to have missed the point of my March 17th speech. During it, I acknowledged quite clearly her right to oppose Ordinance 21-06. What I was objecting to were three procedural votes she took prior to the final vote. My colleague voted with several other colleagues to send the legislation to Committee of the Whole In the name of having all voices in the room for all debate, but also putting it on the fast track calendar-wise. She and three other colleagues voted twice at second reading on March 3rd against postponing the discussion To a more reasonable hour on another day. All of us knew there were many members of the public who wanted to address the issue. The members who voted against splitting up the discussion over multiple nights, who voted to force the issue to be deliberated until 3:30 in the morning, broke a trust that the public and their fellow colleagues placed in them. I should not have to spell out that trust, but it is that the wee small hours are always an unreasonable time For the thoughtful discussion that everyone wants to have on every issue. It is those votes that I've gone out of my way to call attention to. I question the political principles behind those votes. Recessing to a more reasonable hour on another day, contrary to my colleague's assertion, was within their power, yet they refused to do so. It took days for attendees to recover from the forced all-nighter. Harm was done, trust in our even-handedness was broken. They are responsible for their actions because they are responsible for these votes. As early as next week, there's going to be as much deliberation and public comment on Plexus as there was in 21-06. Are council members going to have to abrogate their right to debate the issue fully? Or should we expect to be here all night for that, too? The opposition to 21-06 may have been principled, but the parliamentary methods they used to oppose it were not. My colleague in her April 7th opposition statement urged, quote, "Everyone to think about how we speak to each other in meetings," unquote. It should be obvious that I, for one, think about how we speak to each other all the time. If my colleague is sincere in her desire, I believe it's time for her to heed her own advice, and I call on her to proactively make proposals to prevent such a meeting from ever happening again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volin. Councilmember Rallo.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambleri.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to extend an invitation to my May constituent meeting, scheduled as is usual on the first Saturday, May 1st, at 1:30 PM. It'll be held via Zoom, actually, as we will for the foreseeable future. The link to join, simply go to my website, suforcitycouncil.com, and there's a link that you click on that says join. And that's there for you. So most of our focus will be on issues affecting District 2, like lower cascades and related issues, but certainly, anyone is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambleri. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thanks. I briefly wanted to mention a resolution that the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability passed a bit ago. I, as you all know, I'm the council appointment to that commission and had previously served on that commission As a resident prior to my election to the common council. And this was a resolution that was in the works before I was appointed to that commission this year. I was, I was excited to see the commission taking up the issue of housing, because I think it's important to the mission of that body. And as noted in the resolution, which is called Resolution on Housing First, it notes that a lack of stable housing is at odds with the social equity, environmental health, and economic development of the entire community. So I just applaud the work of the commissioners that they put into that in approving that resolution, which I won't read in full here. We don't have a formal process in place for hearing resolutions from commissions, but I thought it important for the benefit of the public to mention it here. So again, it's called a resolution on housing first, and it declares that housing stability should be a human right, and calls for a citywide comprehensive housing first program to end housing instability. Of course, the city, you know, has been working for some time on affordable housing of all kinds, and of course, there are promising steps with the Housing and Security Working Group That the United Way and Community Foundation are leading, and a number of council members are involved with, including myself. So I think there will be lots more to come. I just thought it was important to share the voice of the Commission on Sustainability On this issue as well, and for any members of the public who'd like to read the resolution in full, it's only about a page and a half, and you can find that in the February packet materials for the Commission on Sustainability. Specifically, if you go to bloomington.in.gov/boards/sustainability, it's in the Meetings and Documents section. So again, just wanted to thank them for their work and mention that for the public. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I wanted to just mention that tomorrow is Earth Day, and so please take some time tomorrow to think about things you do in your daily life That you might easily be able to change for the benefit of our environment. Like if you're driving to the store that isn't very far away, you could walk, you could bicycle. You know, if you're going to that store and making purchases and taking them home in plastic bags, you really should bring your own bag. If you have, don't have a timer on your water heater or insulation around your water heater, you might consider getting, getting that. There are so many small things we can do. Also, when we make purchases, try to buy things that have less packaging. Even, you know, soap and detergent and shampoo can, can all come without packaging. So, so look at those options. As we celebrate Earth Day tomorrow. It was heart-wrenching today. I actually, outside my office window, watched a big limb from a cherry tree be sawed off. IU groundkeepers are very prompt. This was a limb that was destroyed through, because of the weight of the snow this morning. But we need more trees, not less, of course, so that's another thing to consider. If you're a gardener, if you have some property, consider planting a tree this year. I don't know, all these things sound, sound very small, but I think we all need to do as much as we can, given that climate change is, huh, well, the biggest challenge humanity has faced. And we need to do what we can as individuals and as a community. And so I'm very excited that tonight we're going to hear about the Climate Action Plan. Good week for it. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. I will make a very brief comment. I think my colleagues know, and our staff knows, and a majority of the public knows, that matters having to do with council scheduling. It is up to the council president to approve those agendas and that scheduling. This council president does not do that in a void. Ultimately, it is my responsibility, but we have input by those on the council leadership team in coming up with those things. I will not debate earlier comments on appropriateness or lack thereof of meeting decorum. I will simply say this. There is opportunity for me as council president, my council vice president, along with our council staff, and this is my intent moving forward, to have more frequent discussions And interpretations with our council parliamentarian To do the best we can to ensure proper council meeting decorum moving forward. So thank you very much for all those comments. We'll now move down to the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Report As part of the Mayor and City Offices Report. I do believe Ms. Cooper-Smith is present.
Hi, thank you.
You're welcome. Please proceed.
Thanks. I am Jane Cooper-Smith, Assistant Director for Small Business Development In the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development here at the city. I apologize, I'll be giving you a little side-eye because I have two monitors tonight, but thank you for the opportunity to update the common council and our community On the Rapid Response Fund Loan Program and the city's work on the stabilization and recovery of our local economy. I guess I'll go ahead and present. Sorry, folks, this is always funny. Okay, can you see my slideshow?
Yes.
Thanks. As you know, Mayor Hamilton convened the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Working Group Just over a year ago on March 23rd, 2020. The ESNR Working Group includes Councilmember Scambleri and County Councilmember Jeff McKinnon, along with Pat East, Executive Director of The Mill, Brian Payne, Executive Director of CDFI Friendly Bloomington, Jennifer Pearl, President and CEO of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, Erin Predmore, President and CEO of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and from ESD, Alex Crowley, Director of Economic and Sustainable Development, Sean Starwitz, Assistant Director for the Arts, and me. The ESNR Working Group wrote a policy brief which was presented to the council's Sustainable Development Committee on March 31, 2020. The brief recommended a three-phase recovery strategy With recommendations categorized under the response phase, the recovery phase, and the thrive phase. In July 2020, the common council separately approved Mayor Hamilton's Recover Forward Initiative, which offered a broader and longer-range programming focused on racial justice, economic justice, and climate justice, in which is now live. ESNR's response phase comprised several efforts, including the Rapid Response Fund Loan Program, which I will discuss momentarily. Other response phase initiatives include the Chamber of Commerce's Back to Business webinar series, which helped businesses understand best practices for operating in the pandemic. It helped them communicate, or it communicated about state and federal mandates, and it helped businesses understand and access available resources. These webinars were critical in helping businesses steel themselves during a time of complete uncertainty. Amendments to the signage ordinance, the creation of pickup drop-off zones, and eventually the facilitation of the Kirkwood closures Were supported by council in June of 2020 and have helped many businesses adjust to pandemic life. The poodles have been particularly helpful as many food service establishments shifted to carry-out models. Finally, city staff and partner organizations have worked in tandem throughout the year on direct business outreach. One very common thread within all phases of pandemic response Has been the deep community partnership of local service organizations. There was near constant communication between the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, The Mill, Visit Bloomington, the Small Business Development Center, the Cook Center for Entrepreneurship, Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. I would like to highlight in particular the efforts of the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Bloomington, Inc., and Visit Bloomington. These organizations have historically operated on membership models. Businesses pay an annual membership fee or an advertising fee for which they receive services or promotion. During the initial pandemic response, these organizations worked to support every business they could access And did not restrict that support to their membership. I already described the chamber's webinars. Visit Bloomington immediately created a map of restaurants that were open and communicated updates via social media. DBI rallied downtown businesses to communicate about available programming And worked with an O'Neill Cabstone class to develop solutions for brick-and-mortar retail. Again, I would like to express gratitude on the part of the mayor in the city of Bloomington For all that these business ecosystem partners have done to support and protect small businesses during this challenging year. Perhaps the most significant initiative to come out of the ESNR's recommendations is the Rapid Response Loan Fund. Through common council's support of Resolution 20-05, the city was able to deploy $2 million of food and beverage tax funds For the purpose of supporting, quote, "food and beverage establishments, other businesses that promote tourism, and employees of such establishments and businesses within the city of Bloomington." In this cost-effective timeline, you can see how tight the turnaround was on the first few waves of funding. On March 25th, council voted to approve Resolution 20-05. On March 31, the ESNR report was presented to the Sustainable Development Committee. On April 8, the BUEA board approved $500,000 in pandemic response funds. On April 10, the application website opened. On April 17, the Atlas Ballroom signed the first RRF agreement electronically. On April 24, the first loan was funded. And finally, by April 27, the city had already dispersed $445,770 in loan funds. At its April 2020 meeting, the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association Agreed to contribute an additional $500,000 beyond their approved annual budget to support pandemic recovery. These funds were earmarked for operational arts grants, business grants, administrative costs for program maintenance, and for the Rapid Response Loan Fund. Each RRF funding source has its own restrictions. The food and beverage funds are lendable only to tourism-related businesses, whereas BUEA funds are restricted to any business that has operated in Or directly impacted the enterprise zone for at least a year. This slide shows the enterprise zone map, which runs roughly from 17th Street on the north To Country Club on the south, and from Walnut on the east to Rogers and farther west in some places. RRF applications were reviewed by an independent panel of expert volunteers listed here. These 18 community partners spent many weekend and evening hours reviewing and scoring applications. During this time, many of the bankers listed here were already working overtime To support their own borrowers and accessing PPP funds. The city, ESNR, and borrowers expressed continued thanks for this work. I would also like to note the support of the Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe County, as well as CDFI Friendly Bloomington In supporting the grant management software that was used for managing the application process. The, the current RRF status snapshot looks fairly similar to when we last presented an update. You can see the abandoned rate remains high at 143 of 226 applications, or 63%. Of 80 completed applications, we funded 63 loans, or 79%. Only 10 completed applications were not approved, two of which were minority business enterprises, two were nonprofits. That, that didn't have anything to do with the rejection, I'm just observing that. Seven either didn't contribute to tourism or didn't operate in the enterprise zone. One did not have evidence of enough revenue to support payments, and one was more appropriately eligible for county funding. We have funded two loans in 2021 and have two new applications under review. To date, we have loaned $1,858,270 to 63 borrowers. Five borrowers have made second draws. We have loaned $1,564,100 from the Food and Beverage Tax Fund, $75,000 of which has been repaid. We have loaned $294,170 from BUEA funds, of which $50,000 has been repaid. This leaves a total of $510,900 in available funds in the food and beverage category, and $105,830 in the BUEA category. The average loan amount across both funds is $29,496. City staff, as well as council, are focused on borrower demographics As a way to monitor equity and the distribution of these funds. Of 63 loans distributed, borrowing businesses are 9.5% or six were for black-owned businesses. 7.9% or five were for Asian-owned businesses. 3.2% or two were for other folks not represented by the listed options in the application. 4.8% or three recipients preferred not to report a racial identity. 46 or 73% were white-owned businesses. This slide represents the ethnicity of borrowers. 90.5% of borrowers identify as non-Hispanic or Latinx, and 7.9% of borrowers identify as Hispanic or Latinx. 1.6% of borrowers marked this as not applicable. One point six percent of borrowers marked this as not applicable. In terms of gender identity, borrowers represent thirty women-led businesses, two non-binary or gender queer-led businesses, three business owners preferred not to say, one answered both, which I believe is a partnership. Um, and then additionally, one business owner identified as disabled, one business, one business owner identified as an immigrant, five business owners identified as Asian or Pacific Islander, which we already discussed, one business owner identified as a veteran. Um, R R F loans came to the immediate aid of many businesses that fell through the cracks of federal loan programs, businesses that lacked sales history, those that, like many young businesses, were operating at a loss before the pandemic, or those that simply didn't have many employees or business banking relationships. We also received feedback that individuals with prior felony convictions were ineligible for federal loan funds. The pandemic shutdown had particularly left owner-operators in the lurch. It became evident that organizations needed to hold on to this resource longer than what E S and R originally anticipated. The use of funds has also shifted. Early in the recovery, businesses were using these funds to pay rent and keep the lights on. More recent borrowers have had an eye toward growth. These businesses see a way forward for themselves in the post, that's in quotes, post-pandemic marketplace. Additionally, vaccine availability has increased risk tolerance. Whereas before vaccines were widely distributed, it was difficult for organizations to imagine a scenario with consistently increased revenue. We received and tried to listen to feedback from borrowers over the past year. In an effort to make these loans supportive, as they were intended, the grace period has been extended to June first, two thousand and twenty-two. The repayment period has been extended from thirty months to forty-eight months. Under the original terms, for example, a fifty thousand dollar loan would have required a monthly payment of one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, excuse me, and is now reduced to one thousand eighty-five dollars. The next steps for R R F are fairly straightforward. We will continue operating the loan fund as long as the executive order, executive orders allow. We will issue addenda for existing borrowers, extending what we believe are the final repayment terms. We will select a loan servicer, but not likely until at least the end of two thousand and twenty-one, as we do not want to accrue unnecessary service fees. We will continue outreach to businesses across Bloomington to get specific information on their needs for recovery and to promote the availability of these funds. Obviously, the arts also represent a significant part of our local culture and economy. Arts organizations were hit doubly hard as they lost the opportunity to generate revenue uh, through events, and they also faced obstacles with fundraising, fundraising efforts, given the near-instant economic contraction. This slide details the stages of arts grants that have um, been extended in the last year. Assistant Director for the Arts, Sean Starwitz, concluded the application period for the newest round of funding last Friday, April sixteenth. Save Our Stages, which is being managed by the National Independent Venue Association and will be administering CARES dollars, has taken longer than anticipated to roll out, so I know local venues in particular are grateful for this support. Because the accelerated rate of vaccination has quickly catalyzed economic activity, predictions for economic recovery from earlier this year posited a slower recovery than what we've actually seen. Additionally, the impacts of pending Biden administration initiatives like the American Rescue Plan, which focuses on emergency response, and the American Jobs Plan, which is designed to promote longer-term economic recovery, are not yet clear. Small business figures largely in the American Jobs Plan, which seeks to alleviate barriers to capital via the S B A and sees paths to entrepreneurship as a way to level the economic playing field. Locally, Indiana and Bloomington in particular had a busy spring with N C A A activity boosting. Hotel rooms consumed week by week in March, with an upward trajectory anticipated to continue toward graduation. Mike McAfee, Director of Visit Bloomington, notes that graduation weekend will come with new challenges, given the many open jobs at restaurants and hotels, making it difficult to provide good service. Indeed, I have also heard, heard near-universal feedback about difficulties in hiring for service industry work. Uh, broad strokes painted in unemployment data here by E-Impact show that employment in the leisure and hospitality industry is lagging far behind that of other supersectors of trade, transportation and utilities, business services, education, and even retail. McAfee also noted that in the last four weeks in Monroe County, occupancy, rooms consumed, and revenue in the market are all up more than two hundred percent compared to two thousand and twenty, but he doesn't anticipate a full recovery until two thousand and twenty-two at the earliest. Leisure and hospitality aside, Bloomington has been insulated from pandemic constriction thanks to stability gained from higher ed and growth found in biomanufacturing and tech sectors. These sectors figure prominently in both the city's Recover Forward job training initiatives and the U S E D A grant application for the Trades District Technology Center. The responses and recovery initiatives, excuse me, the responses and recovery initiatives supported by Common Council described in this presentation, the programming advanced by the mayor's Recover Forward initiatives, and the countless efforts on the part of our community partners have had a primary impact of offering direct support to locally-owned and operated businesses. These efforts have helped protect this precious local resource. I would like to thank the council specifically for prioritizing these organizations when they were at their most vulnerable. Thank you for taking the time to listen to this update, and I'm happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper Smith. Um, first thing I'll ask is that can you ensure that, um, okay, um, some members get a copy of your slides, um, your PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
We'd appreciate that. Um, thank you very much. Um, do we have any questions from council members on the E S and R report? Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Cooper Smith, thank you for the update. Can you go back to the slide? It's a pie chart that showed um, different outcomes, percentage of applications that were funded, percentage that were denied, and so forth. Um, and in particular, I think it would be helpful to talk in a little more detail about what is meant by abandoned. And I, worth clarifying that it wasn't the R R F group.
Oh, right, yeah.
Okay, so.
We, yes, no one processing the loan application abandoned it. Um, the, the borrower did not complete the application, but they didn't formally change the status of the application. So there's a narrow group, this two point two percent, who formally withdrew their applications. And then there's this larger group of sixty-three point three percent, where they just didn't complete or continue updating their application.
Okay, and do we have any sense of why that might be, or did we receive any feedback on that?
We did. Um, I think there are a couple of factors at play. Um, I think initially, many borrowers start, if you remember, the, it was sort of a frenzy at this time last year. Nobody really knew what to expect. There was a lot of community discussion about funds from food and beverage tax, uh, being made available to borrowers, potentially as a loan, potentially as a grant. The county ended up doing it as a grant. So I think a lot of people started signing up for this and then abandoned it, um, thinking maybe that it was going to be a grant. A lot of borrowers who knew it would only be a loan, um, didn't, they were, there were some people who were not comfortable with the level of detail that they were going to be sharing with the community members reviewing the applications. They felt like they were having to share too private, um, of data, business data. Um, and then there were a number of borrowers who were uncomfortable signing a personal guarantee, which was required, um, to take the loan. So I think those were the main reasons.
Great, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. You can, thank you for clearing the screen. Okay, we have any other questions from council members?
Hey, make a comment, President Sims.
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank Ms. Cooper Smith and, uh, Rapid Response Fund, uh, staff for, uh, I refer to a couple of businesses. I contacted the Rapid Response team and asked if they would just chat with, uh, a couple of business owners who had asked me a question um, from District Three, and, uh, you all did. And I just wanted to thank you very much. Uh, both the business owners were very happy that you contacted them and, uh, cleared up anything, so, uh, thanks a lot for that good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan.
Yes, one question and a comment. Ms. Cooper Smith, uh, can you compare, uh, our, our town's effort to other cities in the state? Like, how, how has this effort compared since, uh, last year with others?
Yeah, that's a good question. I know The Mill has actually just gone through an exercise of looking at other communities', um, direct loan programs, and, uh, I think they said that ours was the second-largest in terms of dollar amount. Um, I, not comparing loan, individual loan amounts, but, um, that they had encountered, and they were looking, um, regionally at least. So, sorry, that's not more specific, but that's the most recent info I have.
It's, it's some feedback and, and certainly useful. I just remember this moment, uh, last year in mid-March of two thousand and twenty, and what a chaotic time it was. Um, and, uh, I think that the members of the Steering Committee, Councilmember Scambaluri and, uh, the Kim from the County Council, and you and your staff, uh, did Herculean work last year. And, uh, I, I just, I want to say thank you. It was an amazing job, and I'm glad that we were able to help as much as we were. Thank you for it.
Me too. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Um, any questions or anything else from any further council members? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Cooper Smith, I too want to thank you for the report. Um, and please make sure we get a copy of your PowerPoint.
I'll send it now. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very, very much. Have a good evening. Okay, now we're moving down to council committees. Do we have any reports from council committees this evening? Okay, seeing none. Um, I do have one, and I would like to announce, um, with pleasure and with gratitude, that Councilmember Matt Flaherty has volunteered to fill the open, um, councilmember slot on the Public Safety Committee. Um, so we're now at the full strength of four members. And either Mr. Parliamentarian or Mr. Lucas, I don't think there's anything more required than I just do that, correct? Okay, thank you very, very much. We'll now move down to public comment. Um, I will remind the public that, um, this is set aside for a maximum of twenty minutes. These public comments are for items that are not on tonight's, um, agenda. And I would like to have an indication, if we can, of those who wish to speak in the public. So we can make a determination on the allotted time. I see one, Mr. Lucas, you see any more?
I just see the one at the moment, and just as a reminder, if folks would like to comment, you can send a message via chat or use the raise hand function. And if you happen to have two individuals using the same, uh, computer or device that would both like to comment, you can, you can let us know so that we can get both in. At the moment, I just see the one request for comment.
Okay, um, let's proceed. Um, he'll have five minutes, I think.
First up is Jim Shelton.
Good evening, Council. Jim Shelton with the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, but at the moment I am speaking on behalf of the CASA program. April is, uh, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I just learned this morning at the Commissioners Meeting, it's also National Volunteer Month. So if you put those two together, there's no way to recognize both of those and celebrate them than by volunteering to become a CASA. CASAs are court-appointed special advocates. They're volunteers who've been trained by the CASA staff to work and assist and advocate for children whose parents are in the juvenile justice system for abusing or neglecting their children. Uh, the, uh, staff would train you on anything that you need to know. Typically, the children have been removed from their parents' home because it's, the court has determined it's not safe for them to be there and, uh, has placed them either with a relative or in a foster care home, or occasionally they'll be left with the parents, but the court would take over the parental role of making decisions. And the CASA's job is to be, uh, the eyes and ears of the court in seeing what is happening with the children and with the parents. The parents will have been given a number of things they need to do to, uh, work toward being reunited with their children. And the CASA will help oversee whether those are being accomplished or not. Will help to make sure that D C S is providing the parents all the assistance that they need in order to be successful in, uh, working their way back to being re-unified. And then to see that the children or, or child or children are safe in their foster placement or parental placement, I'm sorry, family placement, and to make sure they're getting all the services they need. So it's not the CASA's job to fix things, that's the judge's job, but it's the CASA's job to help the judge know what is going on. And they serve as a second set of eyes and ears to what, uh, D C S is doing. And then quite frankly, they're not part of the D C S bureaucracy. And so they can, uh, no matter what something's going to cost, they can advocate for it no longer, no matter how long the case has been going on. And if, uh, uh, at the state level, they're trying to end cases sooner, they can resist that. And the court, uh, very much values their independent input. So please think about that. Um, April's a good time to think about it. Uh, we will have a training for those who do want to, uh, help serve their community this way. Starts June seventh and run to June thirtieth. It'll be Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from five-thirty to eight-thirty. It'll be via Zoom. You can go to monroecountycasada.org or call three-three-three-two-two-seven-two to learn more details. Applications would be due, oh, in about, oh, four or five weeks in order to be ready for the June seventh start. So thank you for the opportunity to share that. I hope some of the, of people listening will think about this. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lucas.
Next is Jean Lennon.
Hello, uh, this is Jean Lennon. Um, I just wanted to make a brief comment about, um, the bike and pedestrian crossing on Walnut and Allen. Um, I'm really excited by the changes to the greenway, the more permanent curves and, and, uh, tree plots going in. Um, I use that greenway crossing with my young son by bike almost daily. I love it. Um, I just wish it could be, um, maybe more like the one entering Switchyard Park, where you can switch to a red light. Cars don't seem to know what to do with us, uh, when we try to make that crossing. Uh, that's really all I wanted to say. I'm excited by the bike and pedestrian infrastructure changes that I see around town and the new paths, and I just want to say thank you. That.
Thank you very much for your comment. Uh, do we have anyone else? Mr. Lucas?
I believe so, no.
Okay, thank you. We'll give it just another second. Okay, seeing none. Um, we'll move on down the agenda to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to any boards or commissions this evening? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, on behalf of the, uh, recommendation, or based on the recommendation of the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, I move the appointment of Corey Ray to seat C four of the Environmental Commission.
Second.
Thank you. Do you have multiple? Just, okay.
My committee, thanks.
Thank you very much. Um, it's been properly moved and second. Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Flaherty, can you repeat that appointee's name?
I'm sorry. Sure, yeah, it was Corey Ray, R-A-Y, his last name.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be proper. Mr. Corey Ray has been appointed to seat C4 with a positive vote of nine zero. Thank you very much. Do we have any further appointments to boards or commissions this evening? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I don't have an appointment to boards or commission, but seeing that there are no further such appointments, I wanted to make a motion to end tonight's meeting at 10:30 PM.
Second.
Well.
Thank you. And I just want to explain that if we are close to being finished with tonight's business at 10:30, we could still extend the meeting, extend the adjournment time to a little bit later. But I know we have a full agenda tonight. And after four hours, many of us are tired and not functioning quite as well. So I'm hoping that we can wrap up by 10:30 and if not, take up the remainder of our business at another night.
Okay, thank you very much, and I appreciate that motion. I didn't anticipate that, I think, thought we had a motion in the works to end at 11:00 PM. However, Councilmember Piedmont Smith's motion has been moved and properly seconded. Do we have any questions or comments?
It's not debatable, actually.
So, actually, you're absolutely correct. Thank you very, very much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
No.
And Bovola?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. That motion passes eight one. Okay, thank you. And of course, when we get to that time, there is a mechanism for this body to extend the meeting as we see fit, depending on where we are in the proceedings. Thank you very much. I do believe we have a resolution for a second reading. Councilmember, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I move Resolution 2108 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded to be introduced by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bovola?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. That this, I'm sorry, this resolution be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2108, accepting the City of Bloomington Climate Action Plan. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution accepts the City of Bloomington Climate Action Plan 2021 as an advisory document which is intended to guide city activities and funding priorities.
Thank you very much. And we have a city representative to present. I believe that's Mr. Crowley or Ms. Travis.
Mr. Crowley?
Hello.
I will start and Lauren will follow. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, council members. I'm Alex Crowley. I'm the Director of Economic and Sustainable Development. We look forward to summarizing the Climate Action Plan for you this evening. Before Lauren provides you an overview of the plan, I wanted to start by highlighting several important points. First, I hope you recognize the significant amount of work the development of this Climate Action Plan represents. Lauren Travis, Assistant Director for Sustainability for the City, led this important project for the community with engagement from key stakeholders and help from Pale Blue Dot, delivering an objective of the Sustainable, Sustainability Action Plan, excuse me, and building on the greenhouse gas inventory and backcast. And Lauren has delivered a remarkable product. Second, she did so in the midst of a pandemic, for starters, pivoting to a virtual engagement strategy as everyone was trying to figure out how to interact virtually. And Lauren also delivered the plan a year ahead of the schedule outlined in the Sustainability Action Plan. These make the achievement all the more worthy of recognition. And finally, while she was doing that, she and the city implemented a number of actions from the Sustainability Action Plan and actually even from this plan. Not the least of which is the Solar and Energy Efficiency Loan Program, or SEAL, which provides support for organizations to improve building efficiency through solar installations, appliance and lighting upgrades, and weatherization. The SEAL program, part of the Recover Forward program, was built from scratch over the last six months. In other words, there was a lot of activity even while this plan was in development. The city did not sit still. Lauren will not toot her own horn, so I will. Please join me in recognizing how fortunate we are to have Lauren at the city and in the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development at a time when it's imperative that we all redouble our focus on our climate challenges in this important decade. So thank you, Lauren, for your service to Bloomington. Happy Earth Day tomorrow to all of you. And now I'm pleased to introduce Lauren Travis.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sorry to interject. I actually forgot to make a motion to adopt the resolution after it was read. So I think that would be in order now and we can move on with the presentation. So I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 2108.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Thought you were going to do that a little later. Sorry, thank you for catching that. It's been properly moved and seconded. Before we go any further, will the clerk please, is it proper to call the roll on this one?
No, we can just move to presentation at this point and then we're ready for a vote after.
Thank you. You can proceed, Ms. Travis.
Thank you. One moment while I pull up my presentation. Thank you, Alex, for the introduction. My name is Lauren Travis. I serve as the Assistant Director of Sustainability for the City of Bloomington. And I served as Project Manager on the City of Bloomington Climate Action Plan. And I'm thinking of the opportunity to consider Resolution 2108, which would accept the City of Bloomington Climate Action Plan. So as stated, Resolution 2108 would accept the plan as an advisory document intended to guide city activities and funding priorities and also deliver on Sustainability Action Plan Goal 1.2, which was to create a community climate action plan, climate adaptation plan by 2022 next year, as well as create science-based targets to reduce Bloomington emissions. We are also serving to be responsive to community concerns. Back in 2019, there were a variety of Bloomington climate strikes in which many community members expressed their continued deep concern for the impacts of climate change. Back at the beginning of last year as well, we implemented and executed a Climate Action Plan survey, which had 472 responses. Of those respondents, nearly 75% of those that responded indicated that they were very or extremely concerned about the impacts of climate change on Bloomington. Specifically, areas of concern included ecosystem loss, extreme heat, impacts to vulnerable people, food insecurity, and extreme weather. To provide context as to how this plan relates to previous efforts, I have provided this timeline and will just highlight a few items. Back in 2006, during the Mayor Cruzan's administration, Bloomington signed on to be part of the US Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement. After the Paris Agreement was adopted, Bloomington also joined the US Mayor's Climate National, National Climate Action Agenda, which affirmed the goals of the Paris Agreement and stated that Bloomington would reduce emissions in alignment with those goals. After presenting the greenhouse gas inventory, I also came in front of council last fall to highlight areas in which Bloomington will be particularly vulnerable to climate change in order to illustrate the work that we have ahead to prepare. Today, I am happy to present the work that has occurred over the past year with a significant number of public input and stakeholder input on our Bloomington Climate Action Plan. To put this into context, it's part of our comprehensive plan objective to, as a community, work towards being more resilient and environmentally responsible. The Sustainability Action Plan set that vision, strategic vision for Bloomington sustainability, and we've continued to execute against that by creating an emissions inventory to understand where emissions are coming from and how we are going to be particularly vulnerable to the impacts of climate change. Across the last year, I have worked to update council as to our progress in sustainability and also implement new progress on climate solutions through Recover Forward funding. Today, I will illustrate how we have both our emissions and then are looking to target the reduction and working towards greater resilience. First, I would like to highlight what the goal of the plan is. The goal of the plan is to reduce our emissions production by 25%, a further 25% by 2030, and to reach carbon neutrality by 2050. For those that are not familiar with the term about carbon neutrality, that indicates that whatever emissions we're producing as a community, we intend to offset so that our impact would be net zero. This goal was set to be in compliance with International Panel on Climate Change Recommendations and city commitments that exist to align with Paris Agreement targets. I would also like to highlight that if this goal is adopted, it represents a 40% total reduction in emissions since 2008. Very quickly, I just wanted to highlight what the trends have been over time. So the blue line here illustrates emissions related to residential energy, which have continued to fluctuate over time but have been increasing in recent years. Commercial energy has flatlined at a little bit lower than it was back in 2008. Transportation increasing slightly. And government energy, which includes Monroe County, has decreased in part because of things like solar installations. All of this prior work has been factored into account when setting goals for future emissions targets. So we know that between 2008 and 2018, we've already experienced a 16% reduction in emissions, which is great, but we know that the pace of reduction needs to increase over time. So with the implementation of these plans, recommendations, we would expect a 25% reduction by 2030. That is illustrated by the orange line here. And if we implement the plan's recommendation, then by 2050, we'd be moving towards carbon neutrality. The blue line here shows the anticipated emission levels if we do not act on these recommendations. You can see that there's a slight decline because of improvements in efficiency and technology, but the rate of reduction is insufficient to meet our goals. So we'll illustrate later what the particular recommendations are. But you can see the gap between the blue and the orange shows emissions avoided, and that represents pollution that we would not be creating as a community. So the plan itself, which is included for the public to check out at bloomingtoniainda.gov/sustainability, is broken into eight main sectors, four of which are primarily targeted towards drawing down emissions and four towards improving climate resilience. In the section that relates to emissions that we produce is transportation and land use predominantly tailpipe-related emissions from vehicles, energy and built environment, or electricity and natural gas-related emissions, waste management, reducing emissions from landfill waste and water and wastewater predominantly through water treatment electricity. Within climate resilience are important actions that we need to take as a community to become more resilient in the sectors of local food and agriculture, health and safety, green space and ecosystem health, and the climate economy. Just to provide an illustration of the plan's recommendations, each goal action would need to be executed in order to reach that 25% emissions reduction. So each goal illustrates a specific science-based target and a date by 2030 that we need to achieve that. So for instance, here, a goal in the transportation and land use section is to decrease the number of miles driven on city roads by 8%. And then the strategy indicates how we intend to achieve that goal. For instance, increasing carpooling utilization by 3% of work commute trips. Each progress measure indicates how this progress will be measured and demonstrated to both council and the community, as well as the co-benefits of each strategy. In addition to reducing emissions, we can expect other co-benefits like improving quality of life. There's many actions in the plan and I will not have the time to discuss all of them, but these are examples of how we can meet these strategies and are intended to be amended, added, and changed over time based on success and implementation. So one example here is establishing a minimum of two EV car sharing locations by 2023. I wanted to take a moment to state that these goals and strategies were not created in a vacuum, but were based on a review of other cities' climate action plans, our 27-member advisory team, three community meetings, and then opportunities to present to council committee, commissions, and hundreds of public comments that we received both over email and through a public forum. So while there's progress that needs to be made across all of these four sectors, I wanted to take a moment to say that 81% of the emissions that need to be reduced by 2030 fall within buildings and energy. And that can be attributable to the fact that while we've made a lot of progress with solar, we still predominantly rely on coal-based electricity and natural gas. 13% of the emissions that need to be reduced are also related to transportation, 5% to waste management, and 1% to water and wastewater. Energy and built environment as a crucial sector to the success of this plan has five primary goals. The first being increasing renewable energy generation every year annually until 2030. Goal two, improving energy efficiency, 16% for electricity and 12% for natural gas. Goal three is important in supporting the utilities' goals to support decarbonization of the local electricity grid. And then moving from onsite fossil fuel use to electrification. And then goal five, which we've been working on this year, is increasing financing options for energy efficiency and renewable energy projects citywide. So while that's a lot of information for each category, I'm going to give an example of what the big move, the most important and consequential action in each category is. And for this one, the strategy that will make the most difference in driving down emissions in this sector will be supporting and accelerating installation of solar across the community. And across the last four years, there's been a lot of progress on this front. There's now over 600 separate installations of solar, predominantly in the residential sector. On the top left is a picture of a Solaris Information Session that occurred back in 2019. We have continued to hold Solaris Information Sessions for community members by community members to help residents understand the process for growing solar. At the same time, we recognize that there's a need for solar and energy efficiency in other sectors besides residential. So we have established in coordination with CDFI Friendly and IFF a solar grant and loan program specifically for nonprofits who are not eligible for the federal tax credit for solar. So that provides support for facility assessments, as well as recommendations of ways that they can drive down their energy use. Finally, in current city efforts in this category, we're continuing to finish up and install solar on even more city facilities beyond the current 32, with installations expected on the Fourth Street and Trade District garages eminently. Within transportation and land use, the two primary goals in the sector are decreasing vehicle miles traveled across different vehicle types. So that includes personal vehicles as well as commercial and supporting and encouraging electric vehicle adoption, which is less polluting than fuel-based. On the right-hand side, you can see someone enjoying the new charging stations at Switchyard Park, which are open to community members. The big move within transportation is to reduce single occupancy vehicle use. A lot of this related to commuting. So the current city efforts in this category include implementation of the Transportation Demand Management Plan, which was presented to council last year. Continued support for commute alternatives beside single occupancy. continued support for commute alternatives, um, besides single occupancy vehicle use, carpooling, bicycling, walking, transit, whatever is appropriate, um, in any given circumstance, active transportation infrastructure development that is called out in the transportation plan, and then municipal fleet, fleet electrification. So last year, through the Climate Mayor's Purchasing Collaborative, we were able to purchase the city's first fully electric vehicle and for subsequent vehicles are looking, um, for electric and hybrid alternatives. The third emissions-producing category is waste management. So there's a lot of progress that we've made in this category. It's a particularly difficult one because the city doesn't serve all residents with their own, um, waste management services. So goal one is to increase diversion through recycling and composting, so keeping waste out of the landfill. And then simultaneously, a very important one is educating, motivating, and empower the public to achieve that waste reduction and diversion. The big move or focus in this category will be increasing organic diversion or composting. So a large proportion of what ends up being landfill could be composted, and that would reduce the waste being hauled to other areas, um, and the methane emissions that relate to that. So current efforts in, uh, composting include continuing our composting program with city facilities. And wanted to give a shout out also to Monroe County Solid Waste District is piloting compost drop-off sites at their recycling centers by subscription. And then our Director of Innovation is doing a leaf composting pilot this year to focus on having residents, uh, process more of their leaves that would be picked up by the vacuum truck onsite if they're interested. Um, and then finally, working with others to evaluate whether there's possibilities for other community composting drop-off sites. Since this is a small proportion of our reduction targets, I'll just, uh, state that especially for city operations emissions, it will be important to reduce energy use from treating and transporting water and wastewater values. And if you're interested in this section, I recommend checking out the full plan. And climate resilience goals are extremely important. These are the four categories in the plan that relate to improving our climate resilience, local food and agriculture, health and safety, green space and ecosystem health, and climate economy. So the current city efforts supporting goals in this category include local food and agriculture. Through Recover Forward Support, there's a new grower-owned farm stop that called Rose Hill Farms that will be opening soon. Health and Safety Utilities is arduously working towards creating a stormwater master plan to look at flooding and how that will impact different areas of the community. Green Space and Ecosystem Health, Parks is working towards continuing their public tree plantings. And then Climate Economy, our department is focusing on workforce development for emerging green job sectors. So as to the next step, um, I'm asking you tonight to consider the, uh, acceptance of Resolution twenty-one oh eight today, but that's really just the beginning of a continued engagement process. So while we've engaged stakeholders in the creation of this plan, there's continued relationship building and it's successful implementation. We, as a city, are also going to be launching a dashboard, which will provide some of those progress measures and stories about the importance of each of these categories and the progress that we've made in implementing them, as well as an engagement platform later this year where residents can see some prior actions and how they can help support the plan's goals. We'll be continuing to implement initiatives and looking towards future funding opportunities with a focus particularly on mitigation, equity, and resilience and future implementation. And I just wanted to thank our consultant technical support through Pale Blue Dot, Terra Soma, and Center for Neighborhood Technology, as well as a big thank you to our advisory group, which included both internal and external stakeholders, uh, specifically our City of Bloomington Economic and Sustainable Development Department, the Bloomington Monroe County Metropolitan Planning Organization, Parks and Recreation Department, Planning and Transportation Department, Bloomington Transit, and City of Bloomington Utilities, and external advice provided by Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, the Health Foundation, Chamber of Commerce, IU Office of Sustainability, Greater Clean Cities Indiana, Monroe County Solid Waste District, Solarize, and Full Sun Designs. I would like to say that obviously I didn't have time to highlight many aspects of the plan, so those that are interested in reading it in its entirety, I recommend checking it out as well as our ten-page summary by going to bloomingtonia.gov slash sustainability. And if you have any questions outside this presentation, feel free to reach out to me at sustain@bloomingtonia.gov. And at this point, I wanted to offer council opportunity to ask any questions they might have regarding my presentation.
Okay, thank you. You want to clear the screen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, do, thank you for that presentation, Ms. Travis. Uh, do we have any questions from council members? Okay, Councilmember Rollo.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Ms. Travis. It's a very good report. It's very detailed and the goals are laudable. And, uh, I want to thank you for, uh, giving me a, uh, an introduction to what has been going on yesterday. We, we, we chatted, and it got me thinking. I got a hold of a report and I gave it a cursory view, and I just have a couple of things that I, I want to ask. One is that in our, uh, climate emission, uh, total for the community, it doesn't include, I, you know, and I don't know if any communities do this, uh, the embedded emissions of imported materials, goods, food, and so forth. And are there, are there any attempts to do that? Are there any attempts to, you know, just, uh, uh, to develop an average emissions number per, per capita, uh, to estimate what we, um, you know, how many, how much in the way of emissions we produce, uh, just by importing those items?
Yes, I, it would be challenging. Those are sort of tertiary emissions. I think one of the ways that we have kind of compensated for that in the meantime, particularly in the local food sector, is to look at increasing dollars of local food purchased. While that's not the same thing, as we continue to follow the protocol updates, I know there's going to be an update in subsequent inventories to take better account into carbon sequestration of forestry, for instance, then we can better account for what the total is. But I think, um, realizing that that impact is there and perhaps not captured emphasizes the importance of taking that into consideration and decision-making.
Yeah, I think it's a more refined approach, but I think it's important because if, if one of the goals of adaptation is building a resilient local economy, um, so, you know, that works, providing goods and services locally, uh, is, is a good thing. And then, and it helps reduce emissions as well. Um, so, and then I had one, one other question, Mr. President, may I?
Yes, please.
Ask it now, and it has to do with, uh, I, I think low-hanging fruit is oftentimes what we're after. And, uh, I'm, I'm very happy about, uh, the progress on trying to reduce the leaf pickup because I think that's a, something that we could, you know, probably eliminate over time. Another is the forty percent of the tonnage that goes to the landfill is organics, and I know you addressed that in the report. Wouldn't a good attempt, uh, this is kind of a loaded question, but let's just say, um, uh, you, you, you showed a picture of a composter, and if we distributed composters to everybody who needed it or wanted one in the city, uh, wouldn't that go a long way? And, and with some instructions to just say, you know, we, you, you separate recyclables right now, put it in a separate bin, separate your compost and put it in this bin, and it's, it's, you know, it's vermin-proof, and you create garden soil, et cetera. It's somewhere where your leaves can go too. Um, it seems to me that that would be, get a lot of bang for the buck. And I just want to state that and see what your, your opinion is.
Yeah, uh, we've done some limited outreach. There were pre-orders for compost bins that we're distributing in these two weekends in coordination with Earth Day. I think part of it's also just helping people understand the logistics of composting. Um, while it comes with instructions, it's a little more complicated than people might think in terms of mixing and managing it. But I think that's a good, uh, possible next step because I think anytime you provide the tools to someone to be able to do something themselves, then it's more successful than, you know, a mandate or some other, uh, tool. So I think that there's an opportunity in composting that hasn't been realized at this point.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm in agreement with you. And, and just one last thing, in terms of city leadership, I think council beat the mayor to it back in two thousand and five. I think we passed a resolution to support the Kyoto Protocol way back then before the Paris Agreement, so. Anyway, since this is the council, you might want to, thanks.
Give credit where credit's due, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Rollo. Councilmember Pete Mont Smith.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, uh, which council member was on the advisory committee for this action plan?
Um, on the advisory committee?
Yeah, you said there was a twenty-seven-member advisory committee.
Mm-hmm. It was city staff and external advisors, and then I presented back in November draft to the Council Climate Action Committee. Uh, so there was a council member sitting directly on the advisory team, but I, uh, presented on multiple occasions to members of council.
Okay, so there was not a council member on the advisory team?
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, thank you very much for the presentation, Lauren, and all your work on this, um, as well as the other folks who worked on it. Um, I, I noticed, uh, I wanted to ask about, um, the, the transportation emissions as noted in the plan. And there was, I think there's a footnote in there about it, you know, having been updated based on some clarified information or, um, I don't know, so, some sort of update in how we track emissions and account for them. And it was a really sizable change in the twenty-eighteen greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Uh, the transportation sector accounts for twenty-seven percent of emissions for the community, which is fairly in line with national numbers. Um, and in this report, it says fifteen percent. And, um, I was wondering if you could comment on, on the updated methodology that led to that sort of change?
Sure. It was more about what traffic was included in that count. So for instance, we got our numbers from the Indiana Department of Transportation, and at the time, they were including the impact of I sixty-nine on Bloomington transportation numbers. And so when those numbers were updated more appropriately, uh, determining the boundaries of where those trips were occurring, then those didn't occur as, you know, primary emissions attributable to Bloomington, but simply emissions that were occurring as a pass-through. So I would say that while the, um, freeway is important, it's also something that is difficult to control what trips people are undertaking on I sixty-nine. At the same time, there's nothing fundamental that has changed as to our emissions reporting protocol. It was simply that the, uh, turn, the Traffic Engineering Department at NDOT did an update back in December, and we were reflecting that.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I have another one, if that's okay, Mr. President.
Yes, please.
Um, you mentioned a, a dashboard that, uh, the city, uh, will develop related to this plan and some of the things with it. I was, one of my questions was actually going to be about how, how we'll track progress over time. Um, as you know, the, the actions, the detailed actions within each goal, um, are categorized into phase one, phase two, phase three, kind of, um, you know, one to two, three to four, and five to eight-year timelines or something like that. Um, and it's obviously a lot of work. There's a lot of different, um, uh, actors at the city, including the council, that have work to do, uh, to, to make sure we implement this plan. And, and yeah, so I was wondering about tracking progress and how we make sure we stay accountable to the plan. Will that be part of the dashboard, or if it's done in another way, that's okay too?
Yeah, so the work on the dashboard is ongoing. Um, I'm hoping that it's, and it's completed soon. It's, uh, the main page will show the goal metrics. So for each goal, it will indicate the trends over time, and then you'll be able to click into each sector and look at strategy-specific information as to whether we're on track or not. So it will show on-track, um, sort of that it's constant or that it's moving away from the progress goal. At the same time, it will provide context about why that strategy is important in regards to emissions reduction and what the city is doing in regards to that particular strategy. And, um, that is one way I think that we will be able to keep on track with this. It's obviously a complicated plan in the same way that a comprehensive plan is, but that will provide a common area where both council and the community can go to it and say, you know, I'm particularly interested in emissions related to, um, single occupancy vehicle use. And they can check to see, are we on track or not? And then use that to figure out what potential both institutional and individual collective actions we can be taking in regards to that strategy. I think it will also be helpful, I've come in front of council and given a variety of progress reports, but there, it's a permanent place for that to live so that we can provide updates as soon as data is available. At the same time, we'll be integrating, um, data that's available at greater frequency. So the electricity and natural gas data is available much more frequently than we can get vehicle miles traveled data, for instance. Um, so in future updates, I hope to use that as a primary tool to reference any council progress reports.
Great, and yeah, uh, before we talked about the dashboard, that's kind of what I was thinking in advance, is maybe something like an annual report. Um, and maybe over the next two years, it would be about phase one actions and, and which ones we've been able to do, and which ones are in progress, and which ones we haven't been able to do for, for whatever reason, so. That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions from council? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for the report, Ms. Travis. Um, will you kind of, uh, briefly tell us and the public how the, uh, if you were, uh, looking to get a sol- solar panels on your home, how does the program work and, um, what does that mean for, you know, a consumer out there that might want to do that?
So there's two options. One is to, um, our community members as part of Solarize Hold Solaris Information Sessions. So if you go on the sustainability page, we have the next upcoming virtual, uh, sessions that you can sign up for. It's about a one-hour program where I provide a brief introduction, and then, um, the installers are also to talk about what the next steps are and just some basics, questions that often come up about solar. From there, then you'll, if you're interested, do a request for a quote from the installer, and they'll, they'll do a, um, assessment of your roof and determine how many panels might be suitable for it and what an estimated cost would be. Um, there's still the federal tax credit. It has been extended through the CARES Act for the next two years, so it's twenty-six percent tax credit. It makes it a lot more affordable, um, than it would be otherwise. So, um, happy to answer any questions that people might have as well. You can also reach out directly to a solar company, um, and they're, they can provide you a bid directly and go through that whole process. You don't have to worry about any of the backend side, the permitting, they take care of all of that. So it's, it's a pretty, uh, relatively simple process.
Is there, is there any, uh, movement towards subsidizing the installation of solar panels, um, for consumers by either governmental, uh, entities in Indiana, Bloomington? Is there anything going on about that that people could take advantage of?
Um, yeah, our department's looking at some opportunities through Clean Energy Credit Union right now, um, possibly offering lower rates for those that might need to rely on loans to cover a portion of the costs. Um, I hope to provide at my next council update, an update about that as well, but it's definitely something we're working on through the Recover Forward Initiative.
Very good. Hey, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan.
Thank you, um, Ms. Travis. Uh, thanks for the report, by the way. It's a phenomenal achievement, uh, especially so early. Um, I'm interested in goal EB two, about increasing energy efficiency citywide. Um, I assume through, uh, buildings. Um, my specific question is about, um, well, for one, for one thing, uh, to what extent do you speak with the planning department about trying to achieve, uh, uh, you know, goals through more efficient construction? And more generally, um, do you think that we need a more stringent UDO? One that's more stringent than the International Building Code, which tends to sort of, uh, not be as stringent as government, uh, as, uh, government-written building codes? What, what is your take on that general idea?
So Indiana hasn't updated its energy efficiency code for quite a while, so that is just something that's a challenge as a statewide. Um, in terms of talking of planning, the, with the Sustainable Development incentive for new construction, I think that's an opportunity for efficiency right there. Um, because in order to receive those height bonuses, that's one of the project components that would need to be undertaken. Um, as always, I think new construction is obviously at, at the design sta- at the design point, that's the easiest point to build in efficiency. But the other thing I think we need to take into consideration is that most of the buildings across the community are existing construction. And so that's where some of these retrofits and weatherization projects, I think, are important because there's plenty of untapped opportunities for efficiency in existing buildings as well. So with the energy efficiency loan and grant program we're doing right now, we're working with some nonprofits that need things like perhaps a new roof to improve efficiency or some new appliances that would drive down their electricity bills significantly.
Okay, that's that all sounds promising. But I guess the the more detailed question I have is, should we be thinking about using the U D O or making the U D O more stringent than state code or the I P C?
I would recommend looking into that. I'm not sure if it's legal from for a municipality to regulate building energy efficiency beyond the state code, but I think that's something worth investigating.
I I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from councilors? Councilmember Pete Mon Smith?
Yes, I I wanted to say thank you so much, Lauren, and to all the advisory committee members and to all the community members who gave input to this plan. It's really remarkable achievement. And I wanted to just briefly add to your response to Councilmember Smith's question about solar. There is the nonprofit Indiana Solar for All that does subsidize some through sweat equity, does provide opportunities for low income residents to solarize on their homes. Unless that's no longer happening, but I wanted to, yeah, yeah, just wanted to add that.
Masked installations that happened last year.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from councilmembers? Okay, thank you, Ms. Travis. We'll now move to public comment on Resolution twenty one dash oh eight. I will ask that you indicate your intentions to publicly comment on only on this resolution by using the raised hand function in Zoom, or you could send our meeting host a message in chat. And we were also asked that if there's more than one person on a computer or a device that you would indicate that as well. Before we, I I would also ask to public, if you could please indicate your intentions to publicly speak on this resolution. So we could determine time allotment. Mister Lucas, I only see one.
I see one hand raised at the moment, and I did receive two comments over chat that I'm I'm able to read.
Okay, we'll start with our public speaker person. I believe that's Mister Dave Warren.
Yes, and he should now be able to unmute.
Thank you. He has five minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Dave Warren, speaking on behalf of Neighbors United Bloomington and Monroe County. First, want to say thanks to all of the city staff who are involved in this, especially Lauren Travis. We're so lucky to have Lauren serving the city and the county. She serves the county as the city representative to the County Environmental Commission. So she does awesome work. Thank you so much, Lauren. First, I I think it's fantastic that Bloomington has put this climate action plan together and is going to be voting to adopt this resolution tonight. I think pretty much everything in this document is is needed and laudable. I would just like to comment and not not, you know, this is just constructive criticism on on one thing I see as a potential missing piece here and something that might be able to be, you know, revisited in the in the future. And that considers that relates to the carbon emissions that the city may unintentionally be be exporting to other jurisdictions when people either leave the city because of high housing costs or people who need or want to to live in Bloomington but can't because of of high housing costs. And so when when folks are priced out of of the city, have to move into the county or to Bedford or Spencer or Martinsville, you know, these are all jurisdictions that are simply not as green as Bloomington. They don't have robust public transit. There's an almost total reliance on cars. And so per capita carbon emissions in in those jurisdictions are are much higher. And so, you know, sorry, I'm just reading over my notes. So, you know, if the city doesn't make it a little easier to to add more homes so that more people can afford to live in this climate aware city, the city is essentially exporting some of those carbon emissions to to other jurisdictions. And of course, climate change doesn't care where where client where where carbon emissions come from. It it just doesn't matter the geography of the the emissions. And so again, that's kind of a wonky comment. I'm trained as a policy analyst. And if anyone ever wants to discuss these issues, either one on one or in a group, please feel free to to reach out. Again, I really appreciate all the work that's that's gone into this plan. And I hope as it's revisited in the the future, we can broaden it just a little bit to to look more a little more dynamically and holistically about how things like housing and zoning and carbon and, excuse me, carbon emissions are all inter interconnected. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Warren. Mister Lucas, can you read the chats?
Yes, the first comment is from David Wolf Bender. The comment reads, my name is David Wolf Bender. I cover city government with the I D S. I understand that no council member or presenter is under any obligation to answer my question in public comment, but I would appreciate an answer if if possible. The city has a goal of reducing vehicle miles traveled in Bloomington by eight percent. The plan explains the city wants to look at car free pedestrian zones. The city piloted this idea on Kirkwood during the pandemic. What did the city learn from this pilot program? How will it affect what other car free pedestrian zones could be established in the future? And did the Kirkwood project get positive feedback from residents? And that is the end of the first comment.
Thank you.
Second comment comes from the B Square Beacon. The comment reads, in the draft of the climate action plan that was presented five months ago, pages one oh nine through one twenty seven have a kind of master table of all the recommended actions, all in one easy to digest place. That fantastic master table has been deleted from the final version. There are seventeen new laws recommended in the draft. Because the master table is missing, it would be a significant and tedious undertaking to verify for oneself how many of the recommended new laws survived, or if any new recommended laws were added between draft and final version. Is there some reason why it's not legally possible or not legally advisable to include a summary table at the end of the plan that recapitulates the recommended actions in the plan? If the analysis involves the distinction between, quote, the decision to accept rather than adopt the plan, unquote, as I have been told, then I'd like to have a clear understanding of how that distinction impacts the inclusion of a master table. Is there some legal reason for the deletion of this master table of recommended actions, or is it simply a presentational choice? And that is the end of the comment. And I don't other requests at the moment.
Okay, thank you very, very much. We'll go back to council for final comments before we move to adopt, I'm sorry, to accept this resolution. Do we have any final comment from councilmembers? Councilmember Pete Mon Smith?
Yes, I wanted to follow up with maybe with our council attorney about what does it mean? What's the difference between we're adopting this plan or we're accepting it as an advisory document? And can you talk a little more about that language?
I I can, although I I don't know that I can speak to why that table, that that summary table was removed. I believe the resolution states the council will accept this plan as an advisory document simply to indicate that you all are not necessarily endorsing each and every word of that, but that you are taking it under consideration and will will consider it as a guiding document, similar to past actions that are mentioned in the resolution. It's the same motion that the council has has used, I believe, twice before. I don't know if if Lauren or Alex might be able to speak to the table if if you're interested in that, but that was the intent, I think, in the in the language in the resolution.
So it that's different from like the comprehensive plan or the transportation plan, which we actually adopted, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Uh, sure. Mine is a a final comment. I'm not sure if there's any other questions among councilmembers, I guess.
Not yet.
Not. I, yeah, no, I just wanted to say thank you again, first and foremost, for for all the work. Certainly Lauren, who spearheaded this initiative and and the the folks at Pale Blue Dot, as well as members of the public who've contributed via the survey and the planning team of folks who worked on this. I I do have a few criticisms or concerns going forward that I hope are taken in a in a positive spirit, because I do I am very encouraged by this plan and by the steps forward here. One has to do, well, actually, first, just another note of praise, which is that this is the first time, I believe, that a city document of some kind, even if we're just accepting it and not formally adopting it, has has sort of softly committed to a net zero emissions target by twenty fifty. Most of our past resolutions commitments are signatory to the to various things is in line with the Paris Agreement, which is a two degree warming target and eighty percent emission reductions by twenty fifty. As as I think some folks know, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change in twenty eighteen issued a report that called on on governments of the world everywhere to to do their absolute best to work to limit global temperature warming to one point five degrees Celsius, noting that some really catastrophic differences between those two amounts. So similarly, the U N Environmental Program has kept one point five degree warming target as their focus for the last number of years in their Emissions Gap Report, which is called out in this climate action plan. So so first, again, that praise for a commitment to net zero by twenty fifty as a target, I think, you know, it's in some ways so much more logically intuitive. We understand what that means. We have to have zero greenhouse gas gas emissions or offset the small amounts we do have, which that tells you a lot about things like electrifying heating sources for buildings and water heating, because, you know, heating with gas is simply not compatible with with the net zero emissions and some really big systems changes like that. The criticism, I guess, is that I I feel like our twenty thirty interim target is a little soft. I I don't think it's entirely consistent with a with a net zero target based on the U N E P figures. We'd really need more like fifty five, that that upper end of that range that's called out fifty five percent below twenty eighteen levels by twenty thirty to be in line with the one point five degree target. I know this is a lot of numbers. And and the caveat to all this is is really that it's a bit semantic and a lot of this is out of our control. As was noted, how rapidly Duke Energy decarbonizes is incredibly important to to our ability to meet any of our goals. How federal legislation rolls out in the context of electrifying vehicles and other things are really important. But but I think, I guess my point is that I think there's room for increased ambition over time as we continue to review and measure and report and see how we do with this plan and ways to, you know, not just back up Duke in their Duke Energy and their commitment, for instance, as one of the goals calls out, but try to work collaboratively across Duke's service territory to to push them to go farther, to do better and 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 decarbonize sooner than twenty fifty. Because that's really what's needed. I think the other big thing I wanted to add is that, of course, with any plan like this, how we how and whether we implement it is is incredibly important, as is making other decisions in the context and spirit of of the goals here and and the scale of action needed. So just thinking about, you know, trying to get back on track with our transportation plan, implementing projects. We're a little behind schedule on that and don't really have a plan yet for how to meet those those recommendations. Similarly, with funding priorities, whether it's the American Rescue Plan, I know we're going to hear some on that soon, and how we how we prioritize those funds and where that money goes, as well as just budgetary decisions and big capital projects. And I think this climate action plan, again, to its credit, does a good job of calling those things out, saying that when we make big capital decisions, we need to be analyzing them from a climate perspective and a climate lens. So I I really hope we can keep following through on on the spirit of that, even in the decisions that aren't directly within the scope of a particular action item, per se. So again, thank you so much. I just wanted to share some thoughts on on how this is a really good step forward, but I I know we've got a long way to go and and maybe there's some ways we can continue to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from councilmembers? Okay, again, thank you very much, Ms. Travis. Appreciate the report. Okay, seeing in no more final comments, it has been properly moved in second that Resolution twenty one dash oh eight, which is the twenty twenty one City of Bloomington Climate Action Plan be accepted. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
Smith? Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Lollen?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yeah.
And Scambolory?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution twenty one dash oh eight has been accepted. Nine zero. We have more legislation for second readings. Councilmember Flaherty?
Mister President, I move that Ordinance twenty one fifteen be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Ordinance twenty one dash one fifteen be read and introduced by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Lollen?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yeah.
Scambolory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. That the clerk please read this Resolution twenty one fifteen by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance twenty one fifteen to amend Title twenty Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding technical corrections set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code twenty point oh two, twenty point oh four, twenty point oh six, and twenty point oh seven. The synopsis says as follows, this petition contains corrections to errors in the new U D O. These errors range from misplaced or missing references to incorrect numbers to terminology correction to missing texts. There are sixteen corrections identified, some appearing multiple times in the code. Your committee of the whole recommendation is due pass eight zero one.
Thank you very much. Our city representative this evening, I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Mister President, I moved that Ordinance twenty one fifteen be adopted.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Do we have our city representative today?
That would be me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mister Robling. I didn't see you down there. How are you?
All right. All right. Hopefully that's sharing.
Yes.
Okay. So this is twenty one fifteen. This is a petition, contains corrections and errors to the U D O. The errors range from misplaced or miss missing references to incorrect numbers to terminology corrections to missing text. There are sixteen amendments identified, some appearing multiple times in the code. These amendments include correcting footnotes regarding side setbacks for legally established lots of record, correcting footnotes in the residential multifamily and residential high density district standards, correcting percentages errors, percentage errors in minimal landscape area and fixing citations. Removing duplicate language, moving references to the proper places and fixing district names. Other fixes including replacing missing mixing text in chapter six. Fixing a definition for manufacturer from changing the word from manufacturer to motor. from changing the word from manufacturer to mobile in the definition of mobile home. And uh changing all occurrences of the phrase change of use uh to the use defined it. The term defined as change in use. Uh, and that is the end of 2115. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for making a screen. Uh, do we have any, we'll move the question from councilmembers on ordinance 21 dash 15? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment on ordinance 21 dash 15. I will remind you to please raise, use the raised hand function in Zoom or send our meeting host a note in chat. And I would ask that you please indicate if there's any intent to public comment on ordinance 21 dash 15. Anything, Mr. Lucas? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll return to council for final comment. Okay, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll ordinance 21 dash 15?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordnance 21 dash 15 is adopted nine, zero. We have more legislation for second reading. Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2116 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ordnance 21 dash 16.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes nine to zero.
Okay.
It has been moved and properly seconded that uh ordinance 21 dash 16 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and stops us only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordnance 2116 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.02. The synopsis says as follows, "This petition clarifies a regulation in the new UDO related to the step-back requirement in the mixed-use downtown zoning district. Your committee of the whole recommendations due pass nine, zero, zero."
Thank you very much, Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that ordinance 2116 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Uh, Mr. Robling, are you still presenting?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, this is, uh, there's one proposed amendment uh for 2116 to chapter two. This petition clarifies that the step-back requirement in the three mixed-use downtown character overlays applies to uh the entirety of the building. Um, the amendment is needed to clarify that a, a partial setback does not meet the, the code. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, do we have a council sponsor for that amendment? I think that, Councilmember Flaherty?
I, I believe uh when Mr. Robling used the term amendment, he meant an amendment to the UDO, which is this ordinance. Uh, he could
Okay, okay. Well, I'm expecting a call button. That, that surprised me just a little bit, so thank you very, very much. Okay, um, moving to council, do we have any questions from Mr. Robling on ordinance 21 dash 16? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the public for public comment on ordinance 21 dash 16. We'll ask that you indicate um your intentions to speak by using the raised hand function in Zoom, or you can send our meeting host a note in chat. Have any indicators, Mr. Lucas?
I see none.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move back to council member for final comment on ordinance 21 dash 16. Okay, thank you. Seeing none for the council, I'm sorry, will the clerk please call the roll? Ordnance 21 dash 16.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ordnance 21 dash 16 is adopted nine, zero.